Good evening, like the call the Thursday, August 25th, 2022 Douglas Planning Board Meeting to Order. First item Citizens Forum, anyone in the audience here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing as none, no A and Rs, no public hearings. Uh, is there anything should take first or just go right in, right in order? Alright, uh, first item, uh, bond estimate Peter Michael Business Park Possible Votes.
With us, uh, Mr. Thomas McIntyre is here, in case you have some questions, Mr. Chairman. But what we have is a bond estimate that was reviewed by our peer review, peer review consultant for remaining work of, uh, Peter Michael Business Park. This is, was 100 Davis Street, uh, Legacy Circle. This is the industrial business park we approved right about the time that I started working here in October. The team mobilized very quickly, uh, this summer and was able to get the baseboards down on hand. Get to the point where they could, uh, just spec out the remaining work for top course and, and sidewalks and berms and stuff. So he gave us an original estimate, came in at about 130,000. And our peer review consultant identified a couple of items that we wanted to add, one of them being a reduction of an asphalt plan. And the other one was installation of the bond. Make sure we caught those, um, so that estimate was adjusted and it should be in your package.
Hundred thirty thousand, one twenty-five?
That's the number.
Okay.
So we're looking this evening for two things.
One twenty-five or one thirty?
Is to, uh, approve an amount for the bond and agree to the performance guarantee. And also there's a request here because of the placement of the bond. And if you recall, when this, uh, came about for the McIntyre Loan Pay, uh, was to release lot six upon establishing this bond. So they can get a business transfer from the CRG site over to lot six. So there's two motions here, and you can take them at the same time if you want, but you can vote to, uh, agree the amount of the performance guarantee and release lot six.
Anything to add, Tom?
Good with that?
Okay.
That covered everything. I would say about much more eloquence.
So for the chair, if I may, you don't have a problem with the bond?
Nope.
I think we should take, my opinion is to take them both at the same time.
We can. You want to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the bond at a hundred and thirty thousand, Mr. Benoit.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
And release the lot, so, um, that's my motion. What lot numbers?
Lot six.
Lot six at Legacy Circle.
At Legacy Circle.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Socrate, second by Mr. Zwicker, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Do we have to roll call?
Uh, no one's online, so it should be good.
Aye.
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 I think you have, it's, it's a seven-member board, right?
You see five.
We need five, yeah.
Four, four, you need five?
The chairman wants to vote, then.
Aye.
Both, uh, motions passed together.
Thank you, Tom, good luck.
Thank you.
It's moving along pretty good.
Be good, stay out of trouble.
Moving along pretty good.
Very good. Take a ride down there, it's, it's.
Since, uh, Mr. McIntyre is here, Mr. Chairman, with the board being interested in signing this now, so he can take it with him.
Sure.
Yeah, I assume that's fine with you?
That's fine with me, yep. What do you have for a ride back home, Tom, about half hour or something? Oh, yeah.
Where, where do you live?
Hopkinton.
Sister town.
Exactly, yeah. Family's hometown, right?
Yeah.
First page is for the bond, second page is for the lot.
Just talking to Joey McQuillan the other day.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. That's where I started my career, was with Joe Seaman, yeah.
Thank you, Senator.
All the chips.
Okay.
Joey was, uh, Joey showed me how to serve that way back, right?
Alright. Next item, plan endorsement Sutton Douglas Development Possible Votes.
Take care, don't stay out of trouble, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have, well, you know what? We have, uh, Mr. Wayne Bellitt from, and from Land Design Collaborative and Tim Plin, we develop our project here. Uh, the good news is that this has been signed and endorsed by Tom Sutton, which is one of our through records. Make sure Sutton signed off on the plan. Uh, the Mylars and the back half of the copies are over there at the table for us to sign. Could it take a while? So I don't know, for the gentleman here, I hope to take it with him today.
It, you know, that would be ideal, but, I mean, there are a lot of signatures on those.
And I think, I know I can't sign.
You cannot, that's correct.
And then Meg, neither.
Correct, so the other members that are here.
Okay.
You get four signatures, we, we still want the track down to Sharpe to sign.
I just, it's one way or the other, we either do it at the end or we do it now. I just, I still give it, well, no, they can't.
They can't engage it anyways.
We're happy to take it, I mind me of that.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take that.
Supposed to be signatures?
So if you can get in, we don't know.
Saturday, probably.
So we'll get in touch with them Monday to get it and put the signature down.
Good.
Uh, assuming the board will let us do it. Chairman, that's, uh, all we're looking for this evening, you guys are very familiar with the project, obviously. Uh, the covenant, the, the previous process was make sure the covenant was recorded and written on the plan. The conditions from the planning board are also on the plan as we have. And then we have to get Sutton's signature in advance, those three things, I'm not.
So you need an endorsement? I'll make a motion to endorse the plan for the Sutton Douglas Development.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Socrate, any further discussion? Is it a henry's? Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained on that one for me.
Thank you, folks, we, we appreciate it.
It's because we had enough eyes. Okay, just want to dot the eyes across.
Cause this is the day. Rich wasn't here for it.
Yeah, he wasn't here, so.
Four, seven is all you need for Minnesota.
Nice, four, that's it.
And I abstained.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we go, I just, uh, I wanted to express our sincere appreciation. Coming into this project, we knew the past history, we were made aware of it early on. And as we said, uh, we worked toward trying to, to the best, to our abilities, address those concerns and fill the butters. It's unfortunate what happened to them way back when, we, again, we tried to, to fix that to some degree. Uh, we know that from this town's perspective, from this board's perspective, that was a hot potato coming in. And we do appreciate the board's, uh, uh, patience throughout the whole process, hearing the deliberations that had gone on. And again, uh, most heartfelt thank you for, for approving the project. We're not going to let you down, uh, in fact, we're meeting with Mr. Benoit, I think it's next week for the reconstruction kickoff, um, on this. So, again, much appreciated.
Keep the neighbors.
And I love the Beatles fan here.
It certainly helped you guys brought in, you know, a very well-done-up plan, you were open with us, both towns, neighbors. It made the process easier from, you know, you guys did as well.
Well, our objective, as we said from day one, um, Tim is going to be in town again, I'm going to be in town again. If we do it right, we're going to continue to do it right. We have a great community, talking with Mr. Manerick and the, the grants and everything that are starting to come into play, it's about time. It's great to hear, and I think there are a lot of opportunities for this to happen, so we're going to work with that with the folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, it did work out well both ways.
I, I, I agree, Mr. Zwicker.
Meeting alarm has gone off.
Big cheer.
Thanks, guys, we'll see you a lot.
Thank you, good luck with everything.
Good luck.
Take care, you guys.
Take care. Good to see you.
You too.
Chairman, I have to notarize this, I have to get my gear.
Okay.
Care of this, um, if the board would like to do minutes or, uh.
Yeah, we can do that.
Doing that.
All the way back to June.
I don't know, I've been in front of me and I did not have time this week whatsoever, look at me.
Well, Mike.
Are we hopping down, are we hopping down the?
Yeah, we're going to look at minutes now while, uh.
Yeah.
Mr. Wanley steps out for a sec.
Got two here. So I reviewed the meeting minutes for June 23rd. There are a couple of typos in here.
Let's hit them.
On page two, item number three. Town about ten lines, there's, um, sentence that starts off recorded, they will, blah, blah, blah. With counsel, should be with counsel, not wit, W I T.
Yep.
And, uh, where else is another one? Down, toward the bottom of the page, 7:50 PM. One, two, second sentence, it ends, ends in the word small. It says finish of small. It should be off, yeah, finished off, small something area.
It just could be finish a small area, too. She wanted to finish a small area, please, get rid of the O F.
Get rid of the.
Yes, man, yeah, finish a small area.
Nice, good catch.
Anyway, that's it for the, um, for me, anyway, for the 23rd. So nobody objects, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as writ, uh, as amended for June 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burko, second by Mr. Marx, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Set June 23rd.
I'll abstain.
I abstain.
Second, set a meeting minutes, uh, June 30th. Uh, reviewed that, I didn't see anything wrong with it, so, I'll let, somebody knows better speak up, but if not, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burko, second by Mr. Marx, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Set June 30th.
Maybe some more signature stuff in that, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of signature stuff.
Run for us, run.
Oh, jeez.
Minutes are all set.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll give you this one, this one here, there are two things that they found.
Okay.
I just made a quick law highlight.
Next item on the agenda, MS4 Compliance Correspondence, Mr. Benoit.
Sir, so what we have here are some recommendations from our, uh, MS4 Stormwater Compliance Consultant from CEI, Nick Christopory. What this is, is, uh, they go through our subdivision regulations, try to identify parts of our regulations that would benefit from low, uh, yeah. The green infrastructure and, uh, low-impact development initiatives and standards where we can tune up our bylaw to promote things like rain gardens and, and more preservation of, of land, such like that, so there's a lot of recommendations in there. I don't anticipate ever going to be going over this this evening, uh, I just want to get you guys the materials, because on another note, we had, I, we had earmarked a couple of the things we wanted to change in our subdivision regulations at previous hearings. One of them was having a standard road width. That, for one thing, but that actually kind of crosses paths with this a little bit, because it's looking for less pavement, things like that. So I want to make sure we're on the, we, we cover all that at the same time. So this is more like homework, reading material for next meeting, so we can, um, identify when we want to make changes to our subdivision regulations. This is a, this is a standard that we have to follow, it's a standard mandate. We also have to have a stormwater bylaw, whether that's a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw, that's something we're also working on. So, uh, we have to hit certain deadlines as we go, and this is, this is one of those things, so. That's the, I guess, the dumbed-down way of saying it, I guess.
This has been brought up more than once.
Yeah.
And, and the thing is this, with every discussion we've ever had, and what the town has and everything that's laid out, we've been determined that we're setting pretty good the way we are, and that we're not going to mess with anything. That's been more than once over the years I've been on this board, and you know, too. Every time it's come forward and they look at the way we have it, they say that we are setting quite well on the way that things are written up. So I, I don't know what they're trying to do here, keep bringing this up or bringing this up thinking that it's going to change or what, I, I don't know. But I know more than once.
They set, in my opinion, unrealistic goals, reach town to obtain right away. It's going to be an ongoing issue for a long, long time, because we're slowly complying without going bankrupt to do, to do these things. So it, it, it'll be ongoing, stormwater management and this type of thing, always going to be ongoing.
On, correct.
We, we, we are, we are in a good position right now, I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to comply as best we can, and we stay in constant contact with them. And this is going to be just a general thing that we're going to have to do for years to come, so I think we're doing okay with it too, Mike, yeah.
And I, and I. I think once something got brought up at town meeting, it wasn't that, that long ago, a couple of years ago, and it got nailed, killed badly at the town meeting. So the, the townspeople themselves are not ready for any drastic changes whatsoever, um, so, and that's all, could have gone in front of them. It's a community that finalizes the deal. So, I mean, that meeting there, they, they sounded the horn quite well on what they wanted to do and not wanted to do. I remember that vote.
Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with either comment, I, I think these are incredibly challenging, uh, expectations, a lot of communities to achieve. In a perfect world, if you could, uh, mold a, a, a perfect crystal, it doesn't happen every time. And every town's different, and every town meeting is different in how you vote on it. In Auburn, at one point, we, as part of our MS4, one of the things that you could implement is try to implement a stormwater tax, where you tax folks for having a driveway and a roof, having a curvy service, and you can imagine how that went at town meetings. So, uh, I fully agree, it's very challenging, so I want to see what out of here can we take? Because we don't have to take all of them, if there's something in there that makes sense, that isn't a huge impact, and we can get it through, and that's why I want us all to at least have a chance to look at it, I don't want to throw something up at town meeting. Or, or just, well, this is our regulation, so we should, we should go through this at our own pace. We, it doesn't have to be turned around tomorrow, so.
No, you can't turn around tomorrow, we, we're, we're doing that, that's what we've been, we've been satisfying their, so the requests.
So, like I'm, I'm reading, I mean, I'm just looking at one thing here about cults and sex and stuff. I hate to say it, in, normally, the people writing these up sit in a glass building in downtown Boston someplace that they could commuter rail to work. They don't live out here in the country where it snows and everything else in the real world. So they try to put unexpected restrictions on people out in areas where it just doesn't work, because they live in fantasy land. And that's the problem with some of this, there's no reality in some of the things that they're looking for.
So, I just consider it homework for now, it's just correspondence and FYI for us.
Yeah.
Something I will be looking at in further detail.
Is there any deadline or date or anything that we need to be, have anything done by, or?
One thing we may consider, uh, I don't know if it'll start here, but it's probably going to start with the select board, is the thing that went to town meeting in the past, uh, through the chair, Mr. Zwicker, was, was the actual general bylaw.
Yeah.
And I heard it didn't go well also. It's, uh, it's gotta take another shot at some point, and I guess, I learned that Bill kind of really made a lot of changes to it up through February before we got, uh, of 2021. And then our consultant actually came here and met with the board in March of 2021. But the bylaws, that's where it stayed, it hasn't been touched since, so I just got my eyes on it for the first time. I'm going to go through some things, it's not a matter of changing it all, maybe there's some things we can take instead of, but it's a, it's a full section, a general bylaw that would be administered by the planning board through general bylaws. So it's, on the zoning bylaws, a lot of homework needs to be done. The thought that I had with Nick today, the consultant, excuse me, Mr. Christopory, was to try to get it on for the fall, but I think it might be too aggressive.
Yep.
So, just wanted to gauge your opinion on that, and maybe put some more work into it.
I think we have other things that didn't make the last town meeting, other things to hammer out, stuff like that, more of a priority.
Very well.
Any other, any other little stuff going on?
Okay.
This is a, with the project where if it's quiet, go after one or two things, hammer it all out.
Alright, next item, 2022 Fall Meeting Warrant Articles for Consideration.
Mr. Chairman, through in your packets, you will see the two copies of our, the two bylaws that, that didn't make it through town meeting last time, the solar and the height. Now, the, the copies you have in front of you are the amendments that the board wanted to make in their final zone. So it's just the one line of height minus the diagrams, minus the elevation piece that you guys wanted struck at the time. So it's just one line for height, other sections, and definitions. And then the solar piece has the three changes that you asked for, the frontage, there was, uh, the dimensional requirements, and the strike of the, uh, limits to clearing, so those three things are in there. So I guess what we're looking for to try to stay ahead of it is to send it to the selectmen at a future meeting, uh, to get the ball rolling on that. Got to come back to us in public hearing.
I like this, I like the amendment, within five feet of the structure, so it's people on building, you know, up in 45, 12, 12 pitch, or, I think it's a house. That's kind of, that's kind of, and average is average, you know, we, we don't have to say every eight feet or every five feet or something, average is average.
On the average, average finish grade or average construction grade?
Finish, it's always finished, it's finished grade, can't be construction grade, but that's why they're adding in the five feet, so that you have, construction and finish grade can be different things.
Well, I, I mean, it's going to get brought up, you know, somebody, they have a finish grade, they can go five feet plus or minus our finish grade, or construction grade, or when are they gonna?
It, it generally, and I, I can probably speak to it, but I'm just saying that, the five foot, it protects the falsity of the height issue, you know? I mean, if they, if they, you know what I mean, it's that, if they burn it up, and the, and the grade is naturally around here, and they're stealing another five feet by just burm-ing, that's not what we're looking for apparently. Then it's really 40 feet from the construction grade, not 35 from the finish, it's the finish, it's the.
But, uh, if it isn't, Bart, let me just say it, from finish grade, don't, don't leave that big area, it, it doesn't say it. Do you agree or disagree?
I, I don't disagree, I think.
I mean, if you're going to have one or the other, say it.
Yeah. So how about on the average finish grade elevation, just put finish in it? I, I buy that, Mike.
You know, that way there, it's.
Still time to tune it up.
You remove that gray.
Let's tune it up now.
Yeah, I get it.
You remove that gray area, and to see what our building inspector.
I like it.
How he feels on that, and or if that's okay with him. Then when somebody reads it, they know what they're dealing with, you do your foundation, you do your waterproofing, you know your finish grade is going to be whatever over your waterproofing or by your waterproofing, you know that's what your measurement is going to be.
Alright, um, as for the solar piece, I think you guys know what I'm going to ask. The, the item that has no limit to clearing, clear cutting.
Yep.
I strongly urge the board to consider it, I don't care what it is, it's just a number, I know I had it as five acres, it was a lot, it was pretty restricted, so.
Why?
Well.
I, if, and I'm just going to throw this out there, alright, I own the land, I own a hundred acres, I've been paying taxes on that land, it's my land.
I understand.
So, I, I mean, it's one of those deals where, this is where big government's trying to come in and tell you, who owns it, has been paying on it, what you can do with that, I, I mean, that's the purpose why people buy and have the land. If you don't want that done, then somebody else could step up and buy it, so you can't do nothing. I, I, I mean, that's the way I feel.
Good, Chair, I just, I look at a couple of the variables, and I understand it from an economical perspective of landowner, I, I get that, I just, I'm looking at a couple of the things. Habitat displacement, I mean, 20 trees down next to my house, and then all the bugs humped my house because I didn't have anywhere to go. And then I got pest problems, just like that, so, and I'm not, it's 20, it's nothing, but obviously habitat has to go somewhere, right? I don't care what the limit is, this is, maybe you have a limit that you can clear for a year, maybe you have to phase it. Just want to have some thoughts in that regard instead of having a.
What, um, just what subsection is it, or?
I just printed like only.
And do we need, do we need to say anything?
I'm just curious.
If I can to the chair, the biggest thing with that is, nobody's going to come in and do a solar project, period. Nobody's going to come in here and do four acres this year, then we're going to attach five acres next year, and then we're going to do eight acres the next year. That's not the way it works, construction comes in, they do the layout, they do the prints, they do the whole plan, and they build it. I mean, that's the, the way it's done.
But is this, it goes, it goes unsaid that anything to do with conservation, that's, of course, supersedes anything, we don't have to, we don't have to say it in this.
No, it's, it's anything conservation jurisdiction, they have to.
I mean, for somebody to get 10, 15, 20 acres on a bridled something in this town is, uh, tough, anyway.
I wish we could get feedback from the town at like our hearing before it goes to town meeting, because that's kind of a crucial thing where you'd want town's input, but they don't come to this meeting to discuss that, and shows up at town meeting and changes can't be made.
It's only our public hearing. Yeah, we, we have to have a public hearing anyway, Mike, do you want me to, you're going to date all these, you want me to date them as I'm signing them?
I'll do it, that's fine.
That's fine, yeah, you date them, okay.
It's, how would you say it, I, I mean, a lot of these people, if they don't do it with the way taxation and things are, they might lose all that land. And not, the other thing is this, okay? You don't want to cut the trees to put in a solar farm, alright, I want to put in 70, I want to build 70 houses and put in roads and everything else. Well, what do you, you can't stop that, right? You can't stop the development, so, so right now, what you're trying to say is, you're okay to build the 70 houses, but I can't put in a solar farm. And that's not, no, it is, it's cut and black, that's what is being said here, and that ain't right.
Someone, so, and through the chair, with the subdivision, we can control whether or not they're going to have a open space buffer from neighbors, and if they're going to transfer part of the land is, as, as part of the agreement through subdivision control, but through, through a special permit for solar, you don't have that, we don't have that right now. So that's kind of what I'm asking, is there, we set buffers, we've set, uh, the frontage requirements and all that, and I think those are strong, I like the way we did that, uh, so I'm just.
Well, through the chair, too.
Yeah.
Mike, um, if we put in a, you know, five acres or something, then with approval from the board, they can still come, and, and we can, I mean, make it as a minimum for us to have a looksee, so they don't strip 30 acres completely on a piece of land.
But that's.
I just answered the question.
But, but that's what the whole aspect and concept of this was, is, if, then just don't have it, then just stop it, because it's, they won't happen. It's a deal where.
Why can't they come?
Families, a lot of them, if they can't afford the taxes, either they're going to sell the land or put in houses to a developer. They're going to develop it, or they hang on to the land, put in a solar farm, and they're still their land, and they get it back in 20 years.
Assuming it's three phases, too, in that area.
Well, don't matter, they'll bring it in, like they are now, I mean, just, they're doing it everywhere. So it, it's, you're trying to tie the hand of one, but not the other. If that's the case, okay, development goes in, you got 50 acres, you can only put in.
But the other has to come to us, the other has to come to us.
They still come to us.
So why can't the solar have a, like a threshold where it just, then we get a looksee at this thing?
We're going to see it regardless, it's just, I'm curious about the habitat displacement, clear cutting.
Mike's got a point.
But the thing is, is, it's, it's your land.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, that, that's, that's a big concern, clear cutting, and, I mean, you're taking down a tree that absorbs all the bad gases to put a panel in. You're not, you're not accomplishing anything, in my opinion, sometimes, you're doing more harm than good.
Five acre minimums, too small.
I just, and we don't have to settle this today, I was just, I want to open up that discussion again, because having no cap, like, I got a 1,500 acre site, and I'm going to clear cut the whole thing, you know, in the summer.
But there again, and I'm gonna say this, you can go to a forester, and get a permit, and go in and cut it.
But there's a plan, you can't clear cut. You can't clear cut on a forest.
You can't clear cut, but once you logged it out, now you're not clear cutting anymore. I'm gonna go in next year and cut the rest of it out. So, you just clear cut it, but it took two years. So, I, I mean, it's-
Makes people think, though, two years versus one, I mean, do it all at once. I mean, we're setting, setting a precedence or saying-
I don't know.
We don't care, you know, like, go ahead, versus-
I, I think the thing to do first through the chair, let's get a list of every one project in our town, and let's see what the acreage is. Take a look at it, of all the solar projects.
Like, build the land?
Nope. The ones that have been approved are already established. So, we know, okay, we know, we've already okayed, say, a twenty acre, a fifteen acre, a forty acre, we've, like, there's a lot of solar projects we've already approved and are built.
They're left.
But I don't know what the land is of each one, off the top of my head.
Each is less than a hundred acres.
So, that's what I'm getting at. So, if we're averaging right now eighty to a hundred acres on a solar project, then maybe do we go with that? Not no ten, twenty, thirty acres, maybe a hundred acres.
Right. Even if it's that big a threshold, I just want to start.
Well, also, not every project, even if it's eighty to a hundred acres, is clear cutting eighty to a hundred acres. I wonder if we know the, the average which gets developed within that parcel, is it fifty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent?
Case by case.
Huh?
Case by case.
Right. But, but is there some average that we can use, like Mike's saying, find out some information? I mean, we know how many acres are covered with panels on, on every project.
We can, I can get some of that.
Yeah, if you could, just a list of all the projects that have been completed.
What is it, like, twelve, ten? What do we have, fourteen?
Three, it's not, it's not like-
One, two, three, four, five? I think it's five.
There's a couple of the older ones.
You got Bosma, you got Gyu up there.
You got one across from the town highway, the old gravel pit there.
Where's the Gyu's?
Yeah.
Gyu, yeah, that's Gyu.
You got Wollam Lake, you got one going in on Oak Street, you got Gyu's, you got Bosma's.
West Street.
Near your house.
They just did West Street.
And near your house.
Yeah.
Got one on West Street.
I think there's five or six.
So, it's not that many.
No, but we'll get an average of acreage.
I'll check that.
And a percent in coverage. So, then you could say, if it ends up being that they're covering, or stripping seventy-three point two percent, we could use some number that sort of is the average of those.
I'll take a look.
You know, there you go, Mike.
And/or, let's say, for fifty acres, you need to have so much of a buffer.
Well, that's already-
Through the chair, Mike, I'm, I'm own, I'm always been an advocate of, it's my land, I like to do what I want with it, but I shouldn't be allowed to go put a pick farm in, in a neighborhood that-
Hey, people will not.
Or put a nuclear reactor in my backyard. I mean, there are certain things you have to consider when you say, it's my land, I can do what I want with it.
There's a note saying underneath to the chair, sorry, the right of my fist ends where the right of your chin begins.
It's, and if I can to the chair, and I agree, but the idea is, is, we all know what's coming down the pipe. They, they're releasing more money for grants and everything on these solar farms and stuff, and they want them in everybody's backyard, they want them on everybody's roof. I, I can see maybe a hundred acres or something, but not no small twenty, thirty acre deal. Somebody owns four hundred acres or three hundred acres, and they wanna put a hundred acre solar farm in.
So, how many parcels are over a hundred acres in this town? Like, eleven?
I bet there's a lot.
A dozen, maybe?
Plus common ownership.
Yeah, you can always merge and create that.
Right.
Anything else for the?
No, that's, it's good, good for me to check into all of the information.
No, thank you.
Is there anything new, really, for the, like?
Mr. Chairman, the warrant closes on September twelfth. We do have another meeting before then to choose what we want to send over the warrant articles. I think these two are definitely two to consider for fall town meeting.
Do we straighten out the bounds, though? Is that a, just a reoccurring thing now, or?
Yes. Good question. And we had a stonemate coming in for a road acceptance, I'm doing a sidewalk with the engineer, but remaining work they were supposed to do, we said he did it, set up on Monday, and then they gotta get us some, some paperwork, say, to transfer publicly to town meeting. That one'll be on. And then I might have an earth removal, but that might be a general bylaw, so that'll go through the selectmen. We'll see. Just got feedback from council on that, so I'm still digesting it.
So, we, we have, we have two articles that are going on the warrant?
Yeah, solar and height.
Yeah, have we, and, have we scheduled any public hearings?
No, it still goes to the select board, then they kick it back to us, then we schedule-
Okay, so we have, yeah, so we-
Yeah, unless there's kind of like a test run to, for the process, to make sure we do it right.
Yeah, yeah. We could send, well, let's get this information first. I'll ask Ken, excuse me-
Please.
About adding that extra language to the height piece. Then on September eighth, we'll be ready to push those to the select.
All right. So, that's it for the town?
Yes, sir.
All right, ongoing development. Any of these have some ongoing development updates?
Let's see. Deer Crossing, actually, it's lower in the signatures.
But there's more.
I'll wait for that. But no, nothing currently on those. As for Wollam Solar, just, we're waiting for a check, so we can get Jeff Walsh out there and do a final inspection on that, and then I'll have the board report to you.
Okay.
But that's, check coming from Canada, it's just taking too long.
If I can to the chair, what's going on with Ninety-three Davis, please?
Actually, the owner stopped by my office today, I'm glad you asked. She has hired an engineer to set up her, so the original filing was done with GBI, okay? She's not using GBI anymore, she's going to be using a different engineer.
Drive-through.
Okay, it is. To set up some special application for drives-through. All right, so, she has, she stopped by to tell, just to let me know that she hired somebody, and then she's gonna pursue that process. That's all I have.
If I can to the chair, I'd like to know how long it's been that let this go. We're coming up on a year.
Yeah, it's been about that before I started, so.
Yep. If we can get an ex, an exact date, I really wanna know. Never, in all the years I've been on this border, if I assume something drag out like this.
You're talking for the talk code.
Yep. Completing what was agreed upon. And if we can, I'd like to know through our, through the inspector, what a game, game plan would be. I've been hearing about this drive-through now for the last two months.
Didn't we ask him last meeting, that, through the chair, for an update from his opinion about what's going on?
Yep.
Get anything?
I met with her, that's-
No, no, with, with the inspector. Cause he's the enforcing authority.
See what he can enforce on whether or not the site plan's not-
Yep.
Complete, and can he shed it down?
As we went through, not necessarily that, but what-
Any safety issues?
What can be done here, as we heard through town council.
Well, we don't have a bond.
Cause he's the enforcer.
Yeah, we don't have a bond, so there's nothing we can go back on, say, hey, we're gonna seize your bond for incomplete ones, so that's usually our level.
Yeah.
But we don't have bonds to work with, so we're kinda hands tied a little bit. I think what the board could, could recommend, or at least request, is that this new filing be submitted by a certain time or date.
And I'm gonna throw through the chair a recommendation out there, any new filing coming in, if anything was on, there's gonna be a bond, and there's gonna be enough to cover that driveway. And that's something to make sure.
It's reasonable.
I'm not gonna, no sense of playing this game anymore.
As she came in, just said, she's hired someone, gonna start the process.
That's it.
I'm just curious how long it, that, you know, that, that process of her starting the process to get in the process, submit it, you know?
It's, it's taking a while.
So, do we wanna maybe, like, ask for a dead, you know, we'd like a plan or a request for a hearing at some point by a certain date, so it's not, you know, all right, next meeting, yeah, she's hired someone, next meeting, the person's working on it, like-
Keep it as a-
So, Mike, you're right through the chair, so the point is that this filing, if delayed, 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 only delays the-
Everything.
The talk code, and, and it's only exacerbates our dissatisfaction with the performance of that in compliance with the approval.
I'd say the last meeting on September.
Ask for an application by then.
And then if not, we'll pursue, you know, any poss, you know, whatever inspection result that Mr. Building Inspector has, I don't know.
I think we lost a lot of our authority by not having a bond.
Through the chair, I don't know if we can demand that she has an application, I mean, I would like to, something in writing, but what her plans are. That satisfies me, so I know what she's doing.
If I can to the chair, we've already done that. We've already had that. We've already got it. What, 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 we gotta have it three times, four times, five times? How many times do you wanna have it?
I think we're just, kinda, through the chair, I think we're in a sticky spot not having a bond.
He just runs out.
That's usually our, that's our strength.
Yeah.
And we don't have that to flex, so.
Would it, can I ask through the chair, would it, we've normally had, was there anything to do with how or who was presenting, and that we didn't have a bond? Is it because we were familiar with the presenter, and how did that happen? You know, so?
Could I have a known number, where it's usually, we always have mandatory bonds for subdivisions for one. Now, this is a site plan approval, why do you even have a special permit?
Is that not normal to have a bond?
It's, I can't really say, only banned since October, so as far as normal goes, in the fast towns I work for, it's not always required to have a bond for some type of site plan. It's usually when you see something that's a little different, you're like, oh, you're gonna install something large that we weren't expecting, okay, that's a little unique, we should put a bond on it. Okay, you're gonna do a parking garage, all right, let's put a bond on that. But this was a small retail facility with a parking lot, you probably at the time didn't think to compete with one. So, it's possible, but what are we gonna say, Eric?
Yeah, it, it's, it's just a two acre posse, like, it's that, so that's, I mean, we don't usually ask for a bond on a small posse like that.
If I can to the chair, that's something that we shared, after the sour taste, should we maybe in the future require a bond to prevent this kind of stuff from happening again? Because, as we know, this is just getting dragged on, and on, and on.
Through the chair, is, is there no, if, what Mike is saying from now on, should we just have, I mean, bonds are normally commensurate with the size of the project, so what is the, what's the hardship for us to place a bond on a project regardless, on every?
You can, you can place it at-
I think maybe it should become our standard.
I know for this one, too, it, it was a matter of the bill, the occupancy permit, where we kinda like, yeah, we'll give you the okay for now to get the occupancy permit, and then once you have the occupancy permit, what do you, what's the matter? So, like, that was also a leverage that we lost at the beginning.
Mm-hmm. I remember those votes.
I'll do a little more homework, see if there's any, any other recourse, if it's just failing to find it.
Yeah.
But knowing that she's willing, trying to come in to alter a facility in the future to, at that time, if the board's willing to, wants to consider such conditions as they can, I don't wanna discuss them now, because there's no application in front of us.
Correct.
But, yeah, it's certainly food for thought.
Okay. Anything else with those developments? No.
No, sir.
Okay. Staff updates?
Staff updates here.
Okay. Next thing, signatures.
So-
I know they are going up, maybe, there's a lot of them.
Yes, there are. Couple, so we did the law release already. There is the deer crossing bonds, the bond amount that we set at the last meeting was three thousand, we just have to sign the paperwork, so that's, that's what's in the question.
We've not started that, or we did?
No.
That's part of the, mobile.
We already, sorry, it's just in our signature folder, it'll pass around.
Yeah, there's more.
Apologies, Mr. Chairman, one of the vouchers in the chapter fifty-three E transfers to general fund, it's back at additional business, kinda one of the same, if you want me to kinda talk about that for a second.
Okay. All right, I can believe, skip the round.
So, chapter fifty-three E was an account, it's a, it's a method for where our application fees used to go when we had a town engineer. Town engineer would use those funds in the application, kinda offset costs for review, et cetera, and then once the project was finished, they'd roll those funds over to the general fund. Problem is, we've been without a town engineer for a long time now, and there's still a lot of funds sitting in fifty-three E that need to get rolled over to the general fund. So, our principal, Chen Kuchere, and Maria, also, the board secretary, went through all of these for us, and with, with our finance director, and produced a lot for you guys to sign in that folder, to transfer a lot of these funds out of fifty-three E and into the general fund, as they were supposed to have been done a couple of years ago. So, this consolidates a lot of unnecessary line items. Some of them are small amounts, you'll need to see it, it's just, it's a housekeeping item, something that does require a vote of the board to transfer the chapter fifty-three items into the general.
So, do we need to actually vote on that, or the vote is the signatures?
Require a motion and a vote.
Okay. So, entertain a, a motion to transfer from fifty-three E to general fund, the submitted correspondence, vouchers?
So moved?
Well, any further discussion? Our pay review funds come out of this, too.
They do not, through the chair, that's fifty-three G account.
Okay.
Sorry, good, all right.
Sounds a different.
All right, yep. It sounds very similar.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Okay. Is it a second, Mr. Marks?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Mrs. Wick, I'll second by Mr. Marks. Any further, further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All set.
Matthew, sorry, do you need me to sign those, or is that? Matthew, sorry, do you need to sign those, or is that?
We have a file, actually don't have to.
Saves you a lot of time.
Can, if you want.
No, it's okay. Decisions, Mr. Chairman. So the Oak Street scenic road permit is in there, for signature.
Okay.
There are two signature pages in there for the other two decisions that are not complete yet. It's up to the board, if you want to provide me with a signature page that I'll hold on to until the decisions are done, the issue we've run into is town council. The decision for Pine that I finished, they just need them to review. The decision for Sleepy Hollow is a little more comprehensive, that we're gonna work on together, some vacations haven't finished that one. So, just curious if the board would be interested in signing the signature pages, the members that can.
Yeah, I can't.
You obviously can't for the, for the Oak Street one, of course, but for the other two, the Pine Pit and the Sleepy Hollow one, if you wanna sign signature pages.
They're already there, over there.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, I don't wanna come back in later.
I will if I have to, but I'm sure I've forgotten one.
So that was, that was objection to it, that was, I still have to work the decision out, not only with council, but with the applicant, and I'll have the board circulate it to the board, so you guys all see if they flow.
Well, it's not complete, complete till you get this shark.
That's right.
You'll have some time. Yeah, it's, circulate the, the finished product.
All these started here, if we pass on a bunch.
They're two different folders. It's two different folders, so.
This set is already over here, that's done, so I'm waiting for that set.
Anything else? All right, next meeting is September eighth, seven P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I throw the Chair one thing out there? Road widths, where there might be more developments coming in, can we get that hammer out here real soon, before any other developments come in?
Sure, well, I'm planning on doing it with the stormwater stuff, kinda doing it at the same time.
Where it doesn't have to go to town meeting?
That's correct.
I think, it's one of those deals, let's get something done that we need to get done. Let's worry about the other stuff as it goes on. The road width is an issue deal, for every development that comes in, and let's make it where it's cut and dry, this is what it is, go from there.
Through the Chair, I wasn't doing them all together, because we do, we still have to advertise it. We do have to, and quite public feedback, or put it as some report, so there's a cost to advertising, obviously.
For road widths, too?
To change our subdivision regulations.
Okay.
Um, through the Chair, I thought, was mentioned where we don't have to do that.
We just don't have to go to town meeting, we just, we can do it here.
Right.
Yes, it's advertised.
Okay, well, the thing is, is, the stormwater stuff has been pushed on for a long time here and there, road widths, let's get it done.
I have a few other things, too, that I'd like to add, so we'll just have it at the same time. I've been marking it up since then.
So if we could, even if it's for two or three little things, that way, it's good housekeeping, let's get it done, be over with it, move forward, instead of keeping, you know, keep kicking the can.
And whatever else you can come up with for, so we can handle-
Yeah, quick little cleanup.